All right, calling to order the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Long Lake City Council. Good evening, everyone. It's six thirty-three P. M., and all council members are present this evening. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, item two, or I'm sorry, item three is Mayor's comments, Long Lake News, meeting review and updates. As far as what has occurred since our last meeting about two weeks ago, we just, City Council just finished a work session where the primary topic was reviewing a draft of the two thousand twenty-six budget and levy. So we have some preliminary numbers that we're working on there, and our staff has done an excellent job putting together a draft budget and quite some changes as compared to last year. So we're, especially when it comes to capital improvements, we're looking forward to officially adopting that at our first meeting in December, correct? It'll be first meeting in December?
First meeting in December will be the truth and taxation formal presentation, followed by adoption of final levy at the second meeting in December.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. So that was a work session. Otherwise, other updates on Mondays, staff and myself and Councilmember Feldman met with two representatives from Congresswoman Kelly Morrison's office, our U. S. Representatives. That was a good meeting, relayed just information for residents if residents ever need or business owners ever in need of assistance, you know, from the federal government, maybe they're having difficulty communicating with a certain government office, getting benefits from the V. A. or Social Security or those types of things. Congresswoman Morrison's office is more than welcome to assist with that. Just contact them, and there's a process in place for them to reach out to federal agencies to try to get an answer to your question or get movement on an issue. So that was a good reiteration of that. Good meeting there. And then last Wednesday, I participated in the monthly meeting of the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, with a great guest speaker from Hennepin County on tree grants. And I'll be forwarding staff information on that shortly, but good programs out there from the county when it comes to obtaining tree grants and assisting with tree inventories and things like that. Lot of interest from cities on that with all the Emerald Dashboard issues going on. So that's the main updates for in the last couple of weeks here, and we'll maybe touch on a couple more as the meeting goes on. So with that, I'll move on to item four, which is to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of sign of five are saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item five is consent agenda. We have items A. through F. on the consent agenda this evening. A couple of non-typical ones are E. approving the two thousand twenty-six Shoreline Fire Department operating budget and capital improvement plan, and then appointing Erica Leachman as Chair and Mark Pressing as Secretary of the Park Board for two thousand twenty-five. Any questions for staff, including the fire chief, Long Lake Fire Chief, on any items on the consent agenda? All right, if not, entertain a motion on this evening's consent agenda.
I can make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item six, open correspondence. Open correspondence is an item on the agenda during which the public may address the City Council. No formal action is taken by the City Council, and comments shall be limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence comments may also be emailed to city staff by noon on the date of the meeting. Any wish to approach for open correspondence this evening? And no submitted? Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to regular business, starting with seven A. Approve request, or approved payment request number one or final for the two thousand twenty-five pavement rehabilitation project at Linda Wood Lane. Is this going to be Jeanette or?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, this was an item on our last meeting agenda. This, the request is for the payment number one and also full final payment to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, or Astec Corp., for the two thousand twenty-five pavement rehabilitation project, which was Linda Wood Lane, and kind of reclaiming that and nice new paving and a much better roadway and the end result. But one issue that certainly had arisen during the discussion was that there was a driveway drainage issue that was occurring at two fifty Linda Wood Lane, which was the site of a new home build. And without having our city engineers here, which was actually our judgment call, so we apologize for that, we didn't have anyone to fully respond to that drainage concern. So we followed up by email. Rachel is here tonight with W. S. B., and Rachel, I don't know if you might be able to provide some short clarifying comments there on that issue. I know you all received an email that Rachel was kind enough to send our way to fully explain the situation there. And I do want to say, the contractor had contacted me directly. We spoke by phone, and he confirmed the same thing. He confirmed that he had observed that the driveway was paved actually inverted. He did mention that he'd gone to the builder and offered to fix that situation that had been left by their contractor. But it sounds like the builder wasn't necessarily receptive to that. So, yes.
Yes, that's correct, to everything that Jeanette said. And I'm sure you all saw my email, but we did meet with the builder of the house back in September when the issue was brought to our attention, and it was determined in the field alongside with our contractor, Astec, that the driveway was paved inverted, and so it was not-
What does that mean, inverted?
It was draining in on itself. So it wasn't-
So from the sides?
Yes, yeah. Yep, it's coming down towards the street. And instead of draining out of the driveway, because we don't have curb on that road, at least in front of that driveway there, we only have it where the storm sewer is. That the only way for that water to get off is to sheet across the driveway. But instead, they paved it so that it sits in the middle of the driveway.
Okay, so the graphic that was provided, I didn't quite understand. It looks kind of like a football thing or something, but that means that the middle, the drainage is occurring in the middle there. Okay.
So this concrete up.
So why would, why, why was it built, I mean, I know it's a stupid question, but why possibly was it built so that it kind of was inverted and kind of collected in the center?
Well, they tied into the old road, which had settled and eroded over time. And in the image that you guys were just looking at, the existing drainage shows that the road had settled there. And so they paved the driveway to match into the existing roadway that was falling apart. And so-
That driveway was put in before the roadway was redone?
Correct.
So they did what I guess I would have expected them to do, right?
I mean, we would rather have them sheet across, like, the water's not going to go anywhere. I think it was just setting in the road because the road was falling apart there. So the water was already sitting there, that they should have paved the road, knowing that our project was coming, and we communicated with them to tie into our new road and to leave it paved until we built the new road. So-
So they could have to gravel theoretically or something until that wouldn't have been a violation?
There was communication, to my understanding, that I had been advised of. I'm not sure if that was between W. S. B. and the builder at the home, or if that was between the two asphalt contractors. But I do recall hearing that there was some communication about, hey, you know, you want to be sure this ties in with the new roadway, and here are the specs. Because I thought that they were provided with that by someone. I just don't recall who that was, but-
So could, could somebody repave the driveway if they wanted to and correct this?
Mm-hmm.
And it wouldn't require any changes to the road itself?
No. No, it wouldn't.
So is it unusual? How common is it to have an inverted driveway?
That's not common at all. Either it's draining off of it or draining into the roadway if there is curb to take that. But because there isn't curb in front of that driveway, then it just needs to-
Drain off to the side, the lawn, essentially?
Yes, yes, correct.
So instead of them building to where the road would have been, they should have just left it gravel, and then done this after?
Yeah.
But even if they didn't, if they built, just to clarify, even if they put in the driveway before the road came through, it still would have, if they sloped it right, it still would have drained to the lawn?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, so they didn't want it on the lawn? They wanted it?
That's how their proposal was planned to drain, and that they had a swale plan to go through that, which they did construct. But with the driveway draining in on itself, then it's not directing that water to that swale in their yard.
So there was actually like a drainage plan or something that would have been part of the-
Yes, yeah. They submit an initial and asphalt survey for it, so-
So it was never, it was never going to go into the road, but off to the side?
Mm-hmm, correct. Yeah. Because the road is draining in the same direction that their driveway would be draining to the low point in the roadway there.
So of course, the primary question that we had before us at the last meeting was, we had some concern over approval of a payment request and final payment to a contractor if, if there was some responsibility there on the part of the city's contractor that we weren't aware of, because we weren't fully informed of what had happened out on site at that particular property. So if that question is answered for council this evening, we would be looking for a motion to approve the pay request.
I can make a motion to approve the pay request.
Okay.
Second that.
You need to say the full deal? Yeah, can you just say-
Oh, okay.
Forty-four.
Say it, dear driver.
Yeah, you-
Forty-four. Motion to approve payment number one final to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corp. in the amount of one seventy-three, two hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents for the two thousand twenty-five pavement rehab project.
All right.
I can second it.
Second, since you guys-
You can third it.
Second, third.
All right, motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have another question. So you said that they, that they put in the driveway to the old road, which would have been a lower point, but yet it's inverted. So, so if they-
If they built it a year ago, and they didn't want to have gravel for a whole year, what should they have done? Is that, that's-
Yeah, I mean, I, I read that, it says causing a low point on the east side of the street. But I, I thought I heard you say that the driveway being inverted puts the water in the middle of the driveway. But which is it? Is it, is it in the east side of this, on the east side of this, the road?
The east side of the street is where their house is, right?
Correct.
Because it's more south. So I think there's a cup at, at the end of their driveway and the crown of the road, right?
There is a cup in their driveway, and when they match into the existing roadway, which had settled over time, that's how it was in the road. Now that we've gone through, restored the crown, our grade is going down.
Oh, so it's pushed that back water more into their driveway now?
The crown, the crown of the new road is pushed into their driveway, but their driveway has the-
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Had their driveway been constructed to, I believe, what was the plan you mentioned, where it would be slanted in some manner to defer water to the drainage swale?
Correct.
Which was up to the side of the driveway?
Yeah, was on the south side of the driveway.
South side.
With a road, because that, their land kind of dropped off there.
Yes.
So regardless of the tie-in, had the asphalt contractor for the builder completed the driveway, not inverted, but slanted to tie into the drainage swale, as was the intent, it would be functioning significantly better.
How hard is it to get, because I'm assuming if you have an inverted driveway, can you just repay, go through and repave a top of, a top of it and then invert it and slope it? That seems like it would be pretty easy. It might be a little higher.
Is it, is it an asphalt driveway or concrete?
It's an asphalt driveway. It's very flat, less than two percent in most areas. So the best solution for them would likely to be removing the patch, I think it was like eight to ten feet, where that drainage area is the concern, and just paving that across to sheet into the swale. So-
And isn't better if it goes into the swell anyways?
Yeah, yeah.
Was, is the swell, which side is it on here? Is it on the right side or the left side of this image, you know? It's hard to tell. Sorry. Because are we able to put it up on the screen by chance or not?
I'm-
Can't see exactly where the swale is.
Oh, yeah, well, he's down over-
So is it twelve million?
Yeah, because this is a driveway that's-
Six million come up.
Okay.
Arrows there are just showing the existing drainage, which is going right into that driveway. So that's how it was existing before we removed it.
Okay. All right, thank you. So this wheel's kind of off, off, but down this way.
What, has the homeowner weighed in on this about what?
I have not heard from the homeowner.
I was just going to text him now, but my phone died, so I can't.
I, the only message that I received from the homeowner essentially, I believe, was what you had forwarded in that exchange, and that they're, you know, had been considering what they're going to do with the driveway to, you know, make changes in the spring and potentially replace with concrete. So-
And this is to pay the contractor that did the job according to the-
This is to pay the contractor that did the city's job.
They sue us because they performed according to the contract, and all of a sudden, they're not getting paid.
We're still in a good window for payment.
Okay.
We're still in a good window for that. And actually, the check is, if approved, the check is ready for payment.
Okay.
Our signature today to be mailed tomorrow morning.
And I spoke with the contractor on the phone, and he was appreciative that it was immediately being addressed at this meeting.
Okay. All right, made a motion, made a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for joining us tonight, Rachel. Appreciate that. Okay, item number seven, bees and boy, is consider approval of an appointment and employment agreement for the position of city administrator. Jeanette's going to kick off this conversation, right?
Thank you, Mayor. I really wanted to just defer and ask you to do it, to be frank. Moments of levity, sorry. As of course, the council is aware, we do have a vacancy for the position of city administrator currently. Our city administrator resigned effective September nineteenth of this year. We were aware that, as we were considering what we were going, what direction we were going to move forward in, and starting to review a number of proposals from search firms, we also were aware that we were going to have an internal candidate. And it was an internal candidate that had proven themselves to grow within their position and have a very excellent knowledge of the city's finances and a really solid work ethic and openness to community engagement and relationships. Someone who is a team builder. And we began to discuss the possibility of maybe we already had the right candidate with us, and maybe we wanted to consider promoting an internal candidate and what that process would be. So with that, this evening, Mayor Minor had emailed myself and city attorney Thames recently and suggested that perhaps the time had come to arrive at a conclusion on the position of the city administrator. And I don't think I could possibly support that more wholeheartedly. So with that in mind, city attorney Thames and I worked together. He prepared with some input based on our handbook, and, and myself, and just kind of knowledge of, you know, employment history and benefits and stuff. He prepared an employment contract that is standard with our prior contracts, but also reflective of the fact that an internal candidate already has accumulated leave. So the terms reflect that. We also talked about the need to update the position description for the city administrator, which hadn't been updated in some time. I prepared an updated position description that was inclusive of, and better reflective of the finance duties that would remain with the position moving forward. And last but not least, I spent a little time on the phone confirming that a mentoring and coaching services proposal that we'd received was valid, because it would be really wonderful to help, quite frankly, any new city administrator get off on the right foot with resources from years of experience. So with that before you this evening, I actually have three recommended motions. A motion to adopt a resolution formally appointing Amanda Noweski to the position of city administrator for the city of Long Lake. Also, a separate motion to approve the updated job description for the city administrator position revised November thirteenth of this year. And last but not least, requesting authorization to contract with Bart Fisher, Management Consultant with D. D. A. Human Resources, for a new city administrator mentoring and coaching services in an amount not to exceed four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. I apologize that that's three motions I'm pinning before you, because I know that that's a lot of motioning. I am happy to answer any questions. I know there were a lot of documents and pages I included in this packet. I did also provide an early draft before the council packet went out to our appointed H. R. Subcommittee members, councilmembers Newcomer and Feldman, to see if you had any questions or concerns. If anything comes to mind, I'd be happy to try to answer that for you.
All right. Great. Yeah, it's, I think the time has come to move forward on this. We've, I know you two have been working very hard in City Hall here, just two people doing the work of what has been three in the past. And Amanda, you've done a terrific job the last couple of months you've been in, in this role and doing my research and talking to other, whether it be mayors or city attorney or other officials. There's, you know, I think, I think it's clear the best candidate was right here in front of us all along. There's only a limited pool of applicants out there for city administrator and city manager type positions, especially in a city of our size. So, and you're coming up here on your almost fifth anniversary in about two weeks, or six-year anniversary.
It's my sixth.
Got it. I might have got that wrong, yeah.
Six.
Six years. So that's a heck of a, of a sort of audition for the, for the position.
I think you've gone above and beyond, too. I think you really kind of-
Thank you.
With the timing of everything that was going on, you really stepped up.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, you proved that in the work session among other times as well. I know you've been working very hard on the fire situation, and working with Chief, Chief Highland on the transition of the Shoreline Fire Department, and getting a good, a good feedback on that as well. I know that's been taking up a lot of your time.
Yeah. And I'd, I'd say, Mandy and I, we, when Scott resigned, we kind of joint, went to meetings together. And I'd say, I'm extremely comfortable with this, A-plus job. So, yeah, not much more to say than that.
So you're going to make a motion?
Make a motion, but whoever else wants to talk.
[laughing]
Are you good?
Excited.
Make that motion.
All right. Motion without resolution, twenty, twenty-five dash forty-one, appointing Amanda Noweski to the position of city admin for the city of Long Lake.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
[laughing]
Yes, yes, that's fantastic.
I can keep going here unless people have questions.
Go for it.
Motion to approve the updated job description for city admin position revised November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All right, thanks. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
And I did say, aye. That's why I just started the next motion when you were saying no. And a motion authorize staff to contract with Bart Fisher, Management Consultant, D. D. A. Human Resources, Inc., for a new city admin mentoring and coaching services in the amount not to exceed four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. I know there's information or packets about timeline with that and everything, and that would get started fairly soon, but I have a vacation coming up, pre-planned vacation coming up.
Correct. We are looking to start it in January or February, because we are going to start audit right away in December when I get back from vacation. So-
Okay.
We said possibly.
Well, you're learning by fire, I think.
Literally, yeah. So we're looking at a January, February start for that.
January, February, okay. All right, there was a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I, I've really enjoyed the last month, two months. I've learned a lot, and I'm really, really excited about the possibilities of what is to come in the next couple of years. So I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Yes, thank you.
Great to have you. And thanks again, Jeanette, for all your work. You've put a lot of work into getting to this point and preparing all of this information. And so appreciate your work.
Happy to do it.
Yes.
And thank, thank you to the council, too, for, a vote for this was a vote for the team. And I think, I think we're going to continue to be able to do our best this way. I really did believe, I wouldn't have put forth the recommendation if I didn't fully and wholeheartedly believe that this was the right fit for our community. You can't help, after you work somewhere for over twenty years, you can't help but feel very invested in the community. And so it, it was really wonderful to be able to see this come to fruition, because I just, I just can't, I've worked with a few administrators, and I honestly, this is the first one I've been excited about. So-
But I just want to say, too, it's been mentioned, but just how much you guys have had on your plate, especially recently, it's, it's noticed. I mean, we, you were literally drinking from the fire hose right now, I feel like. So it's, it's fantastic.
And you redid everything. I mean, you put pie charts and you kind of had capital funds and-
Redid the entirety of the budget while we're doing a fire transition, and learning everything of your job at the same time is not easy. So it's awesome.
That was work. So I won't make a motion. I'll give staff direction to order a new name plate.
Now I confidently, yes.
Doesn't say interim. Yeah, an actual plastic one.
Does it say interim?
I think so.
It does. It says interim.
Yes. I made a temporary paper one while she was as serving as our interim. And of course, I never actually expected I'd be sitting up at this seat, but truth is, with, as we're trying to embrace our use of technology a little better, this works really well. So I think I have to invest in my own name plate, too.
Yes. Great to have you up here. All right, that's fabulous. So let's move on to the next item, which is seven C. Adoption of two thousand twenty-six city utilities and recycling rates.
All right, Mayor, I will be taking this one. Full disclosure, I kind of forgot this, this was even on here. I feel like we talked about this long ago. So tonight I will be bringing forth for council approval, the two thousand twenty-six city utility rates. We discussed this in depth last work session. If you recall, I did inform council that the two thousand twenty-six treatment costs for the Metropolitan Council was going to see quite a large increase of twenty-three point seven five percent. Our annual cost for the Metropolitan Council is going to be going from three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars per year up to over four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars per year. So when I was working on our utility rates, I needed to be very mindful of our residents and how this impact would, how this would impact their bill on a monthly basis. So I have, I had brought to council a few suggestions. The first of the suggestions was our water rate. I, I'm going to recommend that we just keep our water rate, rate increase at a one point seven five percent. This was pre-approved a few years ago as a standard escalator. And my recommendation is just to keep the water rate at that escalator of one point seven five percent for our residents. I'm also recommending on all apartment per unit charges that it goes from eighty percent of base rates down to seventy-five percent of base rates. And I will explain that a little bit further in my explanations. One other increase that we were notified of is the Minnesota Department of Health water testing fee is going, it's going to be going at fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents a year per connection. And so our residents are going to see an increase of eighty, from eighty-one cents up to a dollar twenty-seven for this water testing fee. So in sewer rates, as I mentioned, with the, with the twenty-three percent increase in our Metropolitan Council fee, I was trying to find how I could look out for our residents. So I am proposing a decrease of ten cents on our base rate. I'm also going- I'm also going to, um, decrease the per unit metropolitan council. To seventy-five percent, as I mentioned, and completely remove the four dollar and forty-eight cent per unit base rate. To help offset the impact that the metropolitan council fee will have on our apartment units. So with this, with this, um, fee recalculated. Our fee will be going from twenty-nine, I'm sorry, will be going to thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents per household. And apartments are gonna see a per unit rate of twenty-nine point four cents. Um, I'm also going to try to. Um, I'm also gonna add the metropolitan council fee to all un-metered residential properties. In order to try to disperse this cost amongst more of our users.
Is that in the un-metered fixed charge?
Correct, um, yep, it's gonna be in the un-metered fixed charge. It was a new line item that we've, uh, increased. So you'll see it from one fifty.
Thirty-nine, twenty.
Yep, that is.
And that's why it went from one fifty to one eighty-nine?
Correct, yep, that will be a direct, it's directly the metropolitan council fee. If you also recall, as far as metropolitan council, this is a pass-through fee and so hopefully. With future capital improvements to our sewer system, we can get this fee down for our residents.
Can I ask you a question? So if it's a hundred and fifty, we added just the met council fee, which is basically a pass-through, is. Did we wanna raise the, uh, a ten dollars just to raise the fixed charge?
I believe we were just gonna start with this.
Okay.
Right now and, um, to see how the account, how it affected the account and maybe reevaluate that again next year because we did. If you recall, we did quite a large, this un-metered fixed fee was.
Pretty large jump.
And it was a pretty large jump. And so we felt like this, this jump was justified, um, but not.
Okay.
Un, unheard of. Um, the other fee that I would, that I am proposing that we increase would be on our s- surface water, our storm fund, six oh three. We started to see a deficit in the last couple of years in this fund and so I was. Proposing a seven and a half percent increase, however, this is only thirty-five cents to our residents. So with my proposals, the average household, residential household. Will see a rate increase, um, around nine dollars per month. And I would like to point out that that is a direct correlation to their metropolitan council increase. Everything else we've tried to just. Absorb within the city. Commercials will see, they will also see an increase.
Do you see, do you know what the other cities in Hennepin County pay for the, um, the Met Council fee?
It's, it's based on volume. It is, it is, and I can get that information.
I'd be curious to see that if you could forward that.
Mm-hmm, I can email that to council. I'll email you all the latest information that we have and actually today Jeanette went online.
And is that only, uh, from the INI, the, uh, or is it also based on, you know. Property values or population or?
It's gonna be based on flow.
Usage.
Usage, and so it's usage and INI, so not necessarily property values or, um, anything. It's gonna be flow.
It's flow meter data.
Flow meter.
There was like an overtime one too, where looking at like Long Lake's usage as a fraction of all users. That was an interesting one because there's a correlation with soil saturation.
And over the year, doesn't it have a look back? It's a couple of years old.
It is, it is a cutback, a couple of years.
But they're monitoring the water we use, right, versus the water that they treat?
No, they're monitoring wastewater that they treat.
I know, but.
Yes.
Okay, so how do they know? If, if it's INI or if it's just water that's coming through perfectly good pipes?
I don't know how, I don't know how they're, how they calculate what our INI is based on that, but they. It must have some.
Don't they just treat it all?
Well, they do, but he's saying, how do they, how do they know how much the charge is for INI if it's, if they're just.
I don't think.
Isn't there a penalty for capa- a volume?
I thought it was just total volume, right, and then we know a component is actual sewage and the other components, I, they don't separate.
They don't care where it's coming from. They just are treating a certain volume of water.
Standing.
Yeah, and as a city, we know how much of it's INI because we know how much water is pumped from our towers.
So we use that information and say, okay, we, we pump this much water, but we're being billed for this much.
Right.
Treat water to treat.
Then yes, it has to be INI.
Difference is how much is coming in from.
For example.
Irrigation. That throws a wrench in it, right, but we can monitor the irrigation for the most part.
We can, especially now that they're separately metered. It does allow us to monitor it a lot.
For a little clarity, um, for example, if our wastewater treatment. Bill there were to, if that charge were to go up reflective of an additional twenty-five million gallons going through the system. It is very unlikely that the water tower would see an increase in. Of twenty-five million gallons and gallons pumped because usually we're kind of always somewhere between the. Sixty-three to seventy-seven mark on a bit busy year so far, um, in my experience, um, so it.
Explain that, Jeanette, so, uh, with the water pumped, um, only s- how much percent hits the pipe?
I don't know that. I don't know that. I, I don't know that there's a way to know that. What I do know is that I. Amanda was going to mention it, I could tell earlier that I spent a little time for fun today, um, creating a login to the MCES customer portal. So I could take a look at some of our information and one of the first things I noticed was over the last few years. Um, in months that have had high rainfalls, our flow meter data has spiked correlating with those high rainfall months quite a lot. Not a little, quite significantly.
But I wonder how other cities, if they're seeing that too, or, or.
And that's the thing, I don't have access to other cities' data, but.
Like everybody else, or are we?
I, I think we, we are, um, this is one of the reasons that we would qualify for the INI grant. Through the metropolitan council is because we are on the higher end of flow.
So we had. Two years ago or maybe it's longer going now, but we added. Ten percent to our population with. The stacks, Zvago, Avavera. So that increases water usage, right? I mean, so.
This is probably going to be our first really good year of a good analysis of full occupancy. Um, because. At year end, um, I'll be working through, uh, reports that I see, received from Sean on what was pumped monthly. And, um. We report that to the state, um, our annual drinking water report. So I'll have a good idea from this year to last year and the year before that. What volume has increased as far as what we've pumped. I'd be happy to do that.
And then the, you said the Met Council portal had a by-month meeting?
Yes.
Okay, because the things that we had seen before, I think were just annual.
Right.
That'd be interesting to look at too.
I can actually, um, I downloaded the, I download, I meant to download one image and I ended up with. Six or eight pages of charts, so I would be happy to forward that if the council's interested.
Can you download like CSVs or anything, just to get the tables?
That I don't think I. I don't think I could, I don't think I received CSVs, what I received is just PDF format, so, but I'd be happy to share it.
So Mike, do you remember, did they actually, you know, I know it's a percentage of, you know, your percentage of use of the metropolitan area. Um, but wasn't there some sort of factor if you were pumping more than what they thought you should, like a penalty factor?
I don't, I don't remember how the math worked out.
It seemed like they, there was something like, okay, you're over the, you're kind of contributing too much.
Yeah, and do they do that by population? Do they do it by like a moving average of your past?
There was some sort of factor that.
I don't remember.
I don't remember clearly, but.
When we had a resident, um, that actually met with me yesterday, I believe. And offered to kind of be a, he, he offered to volunteer and. Work with the metropolitan council a little bit and to kind of be that, you know, whatever need to be done if we needed.
Liaison?
Le- yes, a liaison to, um. To try to get to some of the bottom of it.
I, I just wanna understand it better because like when, when you have the two numbers here of, uh, from last year to this year. Is there also a volume, a number that goes along with those?
Yes, they did. I do have a report that they had given me a. I don't have it.
So, so the volume went up.
Yes.
And also the rate went up probably.
Right, the volume almost doubled in two years.
Really?
Cause, cause we went up a hundred thousand from twenty-four to twenty-five, right?
Yes, yes, when you look at the volume, the metered flow volume.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm more interested in volume, like.
Yes.
Because we're, because they can make it go up just by increasing their rates.
Right, and there was that.
But I'd like to see.
And I thought we might have looked at a chart that showed what other communities were seeing as far as their increases as well at the last work session. I'll see if I can track that down and send it.
And I do have, like I said, I do have the, um, when they sent out their preliminary, which they sent out mid-year, they do let us know what, what our flows are. Um, and so I have that as well and it did show a, a large increase with flow. Now, as you mentioned, we did have higher population, but I. I think. There's.
We didn't double the population.
Right, we didn't double our population. And I think that this is, I think we're just starting to see some of the infrastructure. I can tell you when they were doing the televising from District One. There were areas that the water was pouring in the sewer line. I mean, it was pouring. And so. I don't, I, I do think that we, it's. With some infrastructure repairs, I think that we're. Gonna be on the right track with this.
Wasn't there, like when we went to that meeting too, didn't, like, it was, um, Loretto? They, they found an issue that was like really, um, some sort of leakage in some sort of, um, holding pond or something?
One of the ponds, and that was one of our concerns too, is that there was a, there was, there's issue under one of our ponds. I can tell you that I talked to Sean. About the water main break that we talked about last week, um, in one of the manholes. And he said that he can already tell, just since that's been repaired, a difference in. Um, water pumps. Because. That we were losing a lot of water and where that, where does that water go? We were losing a lot.
But what, holding ponds, how, how do you, what, what is that, just leaking?
If there's, if there's sewer lines underneath.
And what do you do with that?
You gotta line them, you gotta line them.
Can we see other cities, um, can we only see ours or other cities on a monthly basis?
I only have access to Long Lake's data, um.
It's not like it's super proprietary data. I'm sure other cities would give it to, I'm just curious how, what the correlation to that, to that rainfall would be.
I will.
Cause we know our soil is, is pretty rough for, for this and.
I, I suspect that's similar to a lot of my, you know, Department of Health reporting and ESP water reporting and stuff. Your ability to log into the portal is likely specific to your municipality's results. I was. Unable in the quick browsing I was doing today to find anything but Long Lake. Um, but that doesn't mean we can't spend a little time on their website pulling some data, so I have some notes here. I'll follow up with some. Sending some information to the full council tomorrow.
And I think you can kind of look, cause isn't there like a, I forget what the look back is, like, it's not.
I believe it's two years.
Two years, and so if you go back even further, maybe it does kind of correlate to.
Well, there's, yeah, I think there's two things. There's the look back, isn't that for the charges, but then you're looking at monthly metered. Numbers, right?
What I had seen was three years, so it was four, three, two. And it was by month, rain by month, so what, I had this wonderful like, you know, bar graph of rain spikes by month. Correlating to a very rising orange line corresponding with every rain spike, so.
Large snowfall melt, I'm sure is correlated as well.
Mm-hmm, so that was interesting.
We have issues is what that's.
That, that was, I actually said to ma-
Thirty thousand dollars in that study, we have problems.
Exactly, exactly. That's from across the room. I literally said, hey, Amanda, look at this. Cause that was the simplest way to point it out for me than I, than I think I've ever seen, so.
You know, and I noticed too, uh, it seems like, uh, you kind of reduce the rates for, uh, apartments. The base rate and, um, the sewer eliminated the base, but. At one charge that the, the residents aren't getting is the commercial industrial per acre, which really kind of. Redistributed the, the cost, uh, to the apartments in addition.
In this, in the, for stormwater.
Yeah.
Yep.
So their bill, cause I, I looked at your, um, chart and that's, that's a hefty fee.
Yes.
For an incre- increase, so their, uh, increase is twenty-one dollars.
When, like I, I talked to a resident this week that had actually received a packet and he just had some questions, they were wonderful questions, and as I explained to him, I said, I think. When we first started, um, if you recall, I think it was the year before, I, I joined the city of Long Lake. Um, the proposal was just to do a, a pretty large base charge. And a lot of our residents were pretty upset about that. And so what we've been trying to do since then is try to find, um, rates that were fair and equitable. And made sense and being transparent, so like you said, our residents, I didn't. Seven and a half percent for a stormwater increase seems very high. But it was a thirty-five cent increase and I knew, I knew that. Um, I felt that. When our stormwater effect is not our residential properties. Those are going to be your, um, commercial and industrial properties that don't have the green space. Um, so the water for that is going right into the, to the roads and this, and right into the storm systems. And so that is why they are going to, their rates, um, they're gonna see the bigger effect of the seven and a half percent. Unfortunately, like I said, for a resident, a single, a, you know, s- resident with single family or whichever. The Met Council fee will, will be impactful and so we were just, we were trying to be mindful of that when setting the other fees. Around that. There's nothing that we could really do in the metropolitan council. Unfortunately, our sewer fund doesn't have. Um, enough of a buffer. That we couldn't do a pass-through, we, we needed to do a direct pass-through, um, but there were other areas that we, we could definitely be mindful of the rates.
All right, were, were you done with your?
I believe I am, unless anyone has any questions, like I said, I.
I, I just say, I reiterate that I, I appreciate having that Met Council fee. Itemized just so we can see, I mean, cause it is a significant thing that. It's not that we've added extra staff to deal with plumbing and stuff, it's external.
Completely.
Um, costs that's landing on the city.
And I think it's important too for our residents to see, especially now that it's, um, it's separated out. That not only do we recognize that there's this fee that continues to increase, but they can also see in our budget discussions that. We're working as a, as a city and as a council to fix these problems too. We know it's a problem and we are looking, it is a priority for us as well and what we can do for our sewer lines. Um, to make sure that it doesn't continue to become a problem, so I think that it's, it's nice for our residents to see that, yes, there's an issue. But we are working very hard to fix it, so.
I think we've gotten better every year and making it more fair and equitable and trying to ensure that, you know, it's. Fair across the board to our.
Right.
Our, our users, so appreciate your work on that.
I got my card in the mail saying I might have a water leak in my house. Does that come out automatically or do you just send that to me?
No, I did send that to you and.
Oh, you got one too?
We actually did a data log and you do have a very large leak, so we will talk about that as well.
I have a large leak? Are you sure it's not that I have four kids that take multiple showers a day?
I did send you a data logs.
Yeah, I know, it's like middle of the night or something like.
Something, and we'll have to look at it, yes. We will look at that.
Water softener.
There is, there is something.
It does, I put a lot of salt in there. It's always going down like at a really fast rate, so maybe.
So we will look at that, so yes.
Thank you.
All right, um, I, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash, dash four zero. Establishing water, sewer and storm sewer utility rates and establishing curbside residential recycling. And residential organics recycling rates.
I'll second that.
Thank you, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your work on that. All right, so with that, we'll already move into, uh, item eight, other business. Go around, council member newcomer.
No, it's all good.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, fabulous. Councilman Feldman.
Not much, actually, I don't want to steal your thunder. He's got the job posting out, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, he'll tell us more. Got it? Councilman Dybek?
I'd like to say welcome to our new city administrator and, uh, I'm very pleased with the progress and, or. You know, accomplishments that you've already achieved, uh, as interim and, um, we look forward to continuing. That success, so thank you.
Thank you.
And then also wanted to say congratulations to the Orenno Women's Swim and Dive Team. They took third place in the state tournament. Last weekend at the University of Minnesota. And, um, and also congratulations to the Orenno High School Football Team. Uh, as they are making it to the, or they will be in the, um, state championship game for the first time ever. Uh, and that's this Friday at one o'clock, so good luck to them.
Wow, that's awesome. Congrats, John.
And, and if you didn't see the, the semifinal game, it had a pretty, uh, exciting finish. I was there and I, this is at US Bank Stadium and I was there and, uh, I don't think anybody expected that, uh, that finish. It was the last. Last play, overtime, two-point conversion, corner of the end zone pass, uh.
Was that a senior who caught that too?
It was a sophomore that caught it. Yeah, Lincoln Steiner, yeah. Yeah, Lincoln Steiner, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so, uh, exciting. You know, football, game of inches and, and in a game of like a single play, sometimes like that, um, happens and it happened to fall our way this time, so.
That is so fun to watch, though, when you get to see those moments and it's so down to the wire like that.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Congrats, that's awesome. I hope they can pull it off on Friday.
Hopefully, we'll see.
Do we, if people can't make it, is it gonna be on forty-five, do you know?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I.
Forty-five?
We, we, there's this, uh, subscription service called NSPN that we signed up for so we could watch all the high school playoff games, but maybe the final will be on, yeah, on something like forty-five, so, yeah.
Who do they play, John?
What's that?
Who do they play?
Cassin, County something or other. They're down by Rochester.
Oh, Cassin.
Not familiar with. They beat Grand Rapids, uh, yeah, we beat Marshall, by the way, which was the number one seed. And, uh, yeah, so that was a big, big win. We beat them by one point, and in the regular season, they beat us by one point, so.
Beat them at the better time.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That's all I had.
All right, looking forward to seeing the game on Friday. Um, just want to mention tree lighting, on the park board, maybe Jeanette was gonna mention that, park board, uh, met the other day and, and identified Friday, December fifth, at five-thirty PM, was our annual tree lighting ceremony at Holber Park. So hopefully everybody can, can make it, and I'm sure we'll get a quorum notice out, and the park board's working hard to put together for that maybe Santa and Mrs. Claus might, uh, join us again this year, or hit last year, and hopefully the Long Lake Fire Department will partake in their very last, uh, event as the Long Lake Fire Department at least.
Absolutely.
Excellent, and hopefully we'll get some snow by then and make it feel more wintery. I walked by the tree the other day and I think I'm actually taller than the tree now, which is a big improvement over last year, so the trees, trees, maybe either I'm shrinking or the tree's growing.
The tree's taller than you now.
Yeah, did I say that wrong? Yeah, that's why, that's why you guys are puzzled, yeah. There. Good event, and Thanksgiving, we won't meet before then, so that'll be next, uh, next week, obviously.
So for me, um, the LMCC moved into their new, um, space in the Public Works Building, and we have scheduled a retirement party for Jim Lundberg. Uh, it's going to be, I have to make sure that I get all my dates right. Uh, December fourth, five to seven, at Carboni's.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So I hope to see you all there.
Is that a Saturday or?
Oh, I think it's a Wednesday. So, okay, so it's Thursday.
Well, that would be a Thursday.
That's the day before the tree lighting, isn't it?
I'll include that on a quorum notice.
What?
You said five to?
Five to seven, yeah.
All right.
Oh, and the Chambers having their, uh, Christmas party too.
Oh, is that a date in sight?
Yes, it's December eleventh, and that, that's the Wednesday one, I'm pretty sure. Hold on just a second.
Eleventh is a Thursday, but maybe it's, um, or maybe it's the tenth, I think it's usually on a Wednesday.
Okay. The Chambers, the tenth, yep, tenth, at six PM at Birch's.
Where's, uh, Lundberg, Jim's, uh, retirement, you said?
It's at Carboni's, just right, um, where your daughter?
Yeah, I know. I just didn't hear the name.
All right, that's always a great event.
I gotta put these in my calendar, cause otherwise I get so confused.
Not come up with the holidays, that's for sure.
And congratulations, Amanda.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
City Administrator, Anna Nweke.
Yes.
You learned it.
Yes, thank you. So I was just gonna give, once again, thank you, council, for this promotion. I'm extremely excited about, um, about the opportunities that we have in front of us. I think that, I think a lot of good things will be coming shortly, so bear with me. Um, I also want to give a quick update, the transition to the newly formed JPA has been going really, really well. I've been working closely with Orono staff and Long Lake staff, um, we, we meet quite often, um, but the transition is going wonderful. I had the opportunity to go to our, a fire member event Monday, it was a regular meeting. I don't know why we haven't done those before, because the food was amazing. Um, I was completely spoiled and that was, that was a, it was a treat. It was a, it was wonderful to see the firefighters and to kind of let them know what was happening, um, and to, you know, Bill Debridge, Mr. Dyback, join me.
Yeah, it was, uh, that was a really good time, that awesome food.
Who catered it?
Well, they, they have different group do it each time, right?
Wojcik made, was making it.
Oh.
It was really good.
Firefighters are good cooks, I hear.
Yes, I did say, I said we might have to recruit him for our next, um, meeting, you know, our closed sessions, if we ever have any that we have to have food, we're gonna get the firefighters involved in that. So no, that was, it was, it was a pleasure to be there, and so I do, I thank them for welcoming me and they were, they went easy on me, you know, didn't give me too much of a hard time, so it was a pleasure. I really enjoyed that, so. Yes, but other than that, everything else is going good. I also want to let council know I will be on vacation, um, the first week of December, so I get to miss all the fun.
There's an operating or operation committee meeting tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow's Operation Committee, yes. Yep, and then.
For the.
JPA.
Yeah, for the Long Lake, for the people, you and Judd Axelson, and then.
Correct, yeah.
Adam Edwards and Chief Corey.
Chief Corey, and then I believe Maggie will be there as finance because she's still, um, assisting us with some of those details.
And.
Chief. Yes. Um, and then the following Wednesday, there will be a board meeting. Yes, so.
Yeah, special thanks to Judd Axelson for stepping up, well, planning commission member to be on the operating committee, and it's a big time commitment and hit, hit the ground running with that.
Yes, we hope, we did promise him that it would calm down a little bit in the near future, so I'm hoping to follow through with that promise, but he's already been a wonderful asset to the, to the team, so I'm very excited.
Great. All right, great update, thank you. Jeanette?
I'm just running full steam ahead with renewals and, uh, getting, uh, very heavy into, um, final stages, I think, with development of our e-permitting portal. Um, I have meetings weekly now, uh, with the development team and um, I'm working on finessing a lot of things, so we're getting closer and closer. I still feel confident we're looking at launch by January one. But, yeah, the, the work continues there and it's moving forward faster and faster, so, um, excited to be getting ready to roll that out. It's kind of funny, all the things that are affiliated with that, that I knew were coming, but then you find yourself in the middle of it, things like, um, it's a great opportunity to update your commercial building permit checklist before you link to it, and it's a great opportunity to update your residential home improvement project handout before you link to it on your new portal, so it's been a good opportunity to be both updating our information and our, um, just what plans might be required per a project and, um, get a little more current, um, and simplify some language too, you know, make it a little easier to read. So, I've been doing a lot of that associated with the portal so that when it launches, it launches the right way, so, yeah. That work is continuing and ongoing, so, and I'm actually, um, I have been tasked with assignments for the holiday tree lighting this year. I will be bringing cookies.
Wow.
I'm, uh, gonna be, uh, printing flyers and coordinating, some members are gonna be distributing, um, some flyers at local businesses and just asking if they can do that, so I'll probably actually be printing those tomorrow. Um, and working on a few little blasts here and there to see if we get any nibbles or interest on potential holiday crafters participating this year, if they chose. So, we'll see if we get any nibbles on that.
Good, that's a good idea. Great.
That's about it from me.
Been busy as always, so the updates.
Working on promoting my new boss.
Right, right, great with that. Chief Highland, thank you for joining us, you got.
Congratulations, Amanda.
Thank you.
We still have a lot of work to do, obviously, and, no, it's been great working with you, so I'm looking forward to it. And just so you know, John, we are on standby for a victory parade for Friday, the fire department.
Yeah.
All set, and, uh, just, the last three years working with you guys has been awesome. It's been a grind the whole way and, and I've just, it's been a pleasure working with you, and, and, um, I'm just looking forward to the next chapter, I really am, and, but thank you, guys. You've always hung in there and supported us, and that meant a lot, that kept us going.
The next chapter being Shoreline, not another chapter in your life, right?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you saying that. Thank you, and thanks for all your hard work the last several years here and for being such a good, a good, uh, coach to the team, that you've been to, to the fire, fire department, the firefighters.
I always refer to you as a player's coach.
Yeah.
Kind of a chief.
Appreciate that.
Good analogy.
It's been good. I've enjoyed it, and, um, we'll see where it goes.
Worth the effort.
That's right, that's right.
Right, right. Is there been any talk yet of having some kind of an open house, like in the spring or something, when it gets a little warmer out, like, welcome to, you know, Shoreline Fire Open House, or?
That's a great idea.
I actually think, um, at one of the meetings that I was at, I don't remember which one, it was mentioned that there could, there could be maybe an event that we put together with like a ribbon cutting or something. I know that that was mentioned offhandedly, I can bring it up again tomorrow, um, but, so I do think that that was kind of the intention to some type of event, so.
It'd be super fun to do that, like, with the rollout of, like, the first big engine with the logo on it, with the new logo, yeah, something like that.
We did have somebody out yesterday and they're kind of going over all of our trucks and they're gonna shoot what's a price and what's gonna cost. They have them all rebranded and stuff like that, and, um.
And the buildings too, I mean, the.
Yeah, the, all the, Monday, they came out with the five new rooftop units and installed them all and hooked them up today, and they're all ready to go. It was a two-day project, they get all five of them up, old ones gone, new ones up, and.
Yeah, you're talking about the HVAC units?
Yep, it's all done.
Wow, fast.
And, um, we got the new masks and regulators in, so thank you for your support on that too, and we distributed them last night and tried them out, trained with them, and they, they're, it's a great addition, so things are looking good.
Great to hear, great to hear, good update. All right.
And you're looking for a deputy chief?
Oh, yeah.
Correct, we put, we put, uh, we put the job posting out on last Friday and we're wrapping it up next Friday, so we give it two weeks and, um, I'll keep you posted on that one.
Where is the job posted? Is it, um, like, League of Minnesota Cities or on our own website, or?
It's on both cities' websites and, uh, and then I posted it on Hennepin Chiefs myself, and then you posted it on the League of Minnesota Cities and some other things, so it's, it's.
So it is on the League of Minnesota Cities, or?
Actually, not yet, but it will be tomorrow.
Okay.
I wasn't sure who was taking the lead on that one, so, there's.
Orono was or something, but yeah, I would say I'm gonna duplicate.
Yeah, exactly.
Somebody should.
Okay. I'll double check that.
Great. All right.
So there aren't, that's, that's pretty much, you know, where they need to, where it needs to be, and there aren't, uh, other Craigslist or anything?
Is there any kind of estate network versus Hennepin County Chiefs network?
We can talk about that tomorrow if you want.
Okay.
Telephone, telegraph, telefirefighter.
What's that?
Telephone, telegraph, telefirefighter.
All right, last call from the council. All right, so our next meeting will be on Tuesday, December second, at six-thirty PM.
Boy, that is gonna be a busy week.
Yes, it is.
Don't forget the fourth, the fifth.
Right, something every night.
We'll be seeing a lot of each other.
Right, right. All right, in the meantime, we have a great Thanksgiving, lots to be thankful for this year. Um, and so if there's no objection, I'll adjourn the meeting by general consent. Harry Nunn, meeting is adjourned at seven-thirty-seven.